It's 6:06 PM. It's Monday, April 11th, 2022. We're at the North School Boardroom. And I'm going to ask Ms. Darling to please take the attendance.
Ms. Raymond is absent. Ms. Darling is here. Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Seem.
Here.
And our -- oh, say, do we call you next? So, other members in attendance. Jessica Brown. So, Jessica Brown.
President Bishop.
President Bishop, Mr. Parker, and I would say, is Dr. McKinney and Dr. Donovan coming? Now, okay. And Mrs. Carey. See, this is why we don't let me do notes.
No, no.
That's okay. It's good learning experience. Good learning experience. I'd like to apologize for us running a little bit late tonight. Our meeting was supposed to be around 6:15, and it just happened this way. We just didn't get here in time. First of all, we have a lot on our agenda tonight. We do have a policy ILD, noneducational, nonacademic question surveys and research. I don't know if we're going to get to that tonight, but we did have a lot of parents. We did hear from parents regarding this. This is not going to be aimed at any student, so I don't want to bring up any students' names if anybody knows of any students that or parents that were upset with this survey. We're just going to review the policy and see what we can do to make it better so parents are more informed when it comes to that. So, I just want to make sure all students are not to be mentioned. Okay, with that said, we have from 3/22/22, policy meeting, and that was brought to the full board, if I remember. We sent it back to committee because we had questions. I wrote down a lot of questions, too. It's policy ADC, tobacco products in and on school facilities and grounds. So, that was a big issue at the full board. So, I guess, who's going to lead us in that? Is that you? Parker, Mrs. Carey?
Well, we brought this forward in the notice discussed at the last meeting, which I was not in attendance to. And so, Diane, Ms. Carey will...
Sure. I think the issue with that policy, we had adopted it from the NHSBA. We updated our policy, and there were two separate pieces in that policy. One talked about that students are prohibited from possessing it on school grounds, and adults are not able to use it. So, it was, it split it up, and I think that was where the question lied.
So, would you just, I'm sorry, would you repeat that again for me? I didn't get it. It's my fault. It wasn't you.
Okay. So, the tobacco policy and the tobacco use policy was one that, it's been kicked back a couple of times. The first time, I was not present at that meeting, but the second one, this last time around, the question came up because, again, we're adopting these policies from the NHSBA. So, we're, these have already been vetted through legal counsel with the state, and the change was really adding in, it talked about in the beginning, possession for students that are not allowed to have it on the property, on the school grounds, and adults are not able to use it here. So, it's split up because you can't police, you know, adults not bringing tobacco products onto school grounds. I mean, they're adults. It's legal. It's a legal substance. And that was the issue that the school board had questioned. So, and the board, the full board wanted us to discuss it again tonight here.
Ms. Brown?
Just, so, I agree with you. Just to clarify, so that's where you added in C and D for employees. That was what was added in between the previous version of this policy and the new one. Initial responsibility for enforcement of this shall be rest with the building principals or their designees, and then so on. So, that was what we inserted to break it up. Okay? And honestly, I read through that, and I think that seems completely appropriate to me.
Thank you. Because I know that we can't, students are minors, so they can't have it on them anyway. So, they can't smoke it. The question was with the employees. They can carry it on them, but they just can't use any type of tobacco or the e-cigarettes or anything else on...
They cannot smoke on school grounds. But if they have it in their briefcase or pocket in their car, we don't have the right to say, you know, they're consenting adults, it's not an illegal substance. And so, to hold it, this, for that, something that we cannot police or enforce, and in fact, it's not legal to do, you know, our recommendation is to take this policy as it is written because it says expansive as it can be.
Okay. Yeah. I think that was one of the biggest, that was the hurdle because the questions kept coming up. And I had asked also, back when I thought it was 100 feet that you couldn't smoke within 100 feet of the school property, but we found out that it wasn't there. But somewhere along the line, I remember, or maybe we discussed it, either board, because a lot of this is school, excuse me, school property. So, is there any other questions, Ms. Seem?
In the paragraph that says specific enforcement for this, we dealt in the student behavior standard and related student policies. That's been marked out. May I ask why?
It's on, it's... I'm looking for you now.
I'm sorry. It's right at the second paragraph on the...
Well, it just, I think it starts with the preferred language is what's not... Sorry. Sorry. The preferred language is what's not crossed out. And so, I think enforcement of the prohibition against students shall initially rest with the building principles. All right? So, that's the enforcement piece. It's going to start with the building administration. Okay? Or their designees, assistant principals. That's what we're talking about.
But I'm saying, why did, if it, I assume then that you are saying that it is still in the student behavior standard related. I think...
In the student parent handbook.
Still there. So, to me, to tell them that it is in that book, just reinforce, I don't know why we're marking it out. I don't, I don't see any reason. It's informative. I mean, they can, if they have more questions, they can go to this other document and...
But this, the student handbook is reviewed with students every year.
Yeah.
Okay? And so, I don't know necessarily that it needs to be stated in the policy, that that's the protocol of the schools to do. I don't think we lose anything because it's enforced and it's reviewed.
I don't think it hurts anything, and I think that people, I think that the students, I can tell you that I've been given a lot of documents in a lot of different places that I never read until I got to a point where it was something that I had an issue. And then, I wanted to know where are the different places that I can go to find out what the policies are. So, I, and I guess I would go down to where it says employees, and, and I don't, so the employees are under a separate paragraph? Why were they not, is there any reason they couldn't have been combined, or is there? I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I just, I think...
Again, we, this policy was rewritten based on the updates in the NHSBA. And so, it just, it's, it clarifies it. It's spelling out, it's pulling out employees, it's separating it from the students, and it's just, it just makes it a nice, clear, concise policy.
And going back to the students...
Because there are, there are two different responsibilities. There's two different sets of protocols, one for students, one for employees. So, this just breaks it out nice. It flows better, and...
Are you saying that the two different protocols are that, that the employees can bring them to work because we can't control the employees, but the students cannot because we can control them?
Well, the students also...
It's illegal for the students.
Students aren't supposed to be having tobacco products, especially under 18 years of age. Again, so this is, it's spelling the policy out because you can't police an adult who it's a legal substance. They're allowed to have it. It's not prohibited. They just can't use it on school grounds. The students, however, you can control what they do when they bring on school property, and that's spelled out. And so, that's why it's spelling, it's putting it in two separate buckets, and that's the big difference.
And in the last...
It's actually under 21 now. Cigarettes, under 21.
Oh, yeah. But Ms. Seem, to your point about, if you look at the last sentence under students, you know, additional consequences...
Under students?
I mean, the paragraph above employees.
Okay.
Okay? That last sentence, additional consequences may be administered pursuant to printed student conduct rules, which refers to, you know, our policies...
No, that satisfies me. Actually, where it says printed student conduct rules, you could put in print these student behavioral standards, just to tell them where the book is. But if you don't want to, it's all right. I don't, that's all right. I guess I'm asking myself, and I hear what you're saying about, I think it would be unfortunate indeed if any of our staff encouraged the kids to smoke. That would, but I guess the point is, the law is the law, and I don't make the law control it. So, I guess I'll have to let that go, too.
And the other thing, too, it's not uncommon, these policies would all be books. We, in all the policies, it's standard format to also reference other policies that if a position, if a specific policy covers one area, it's very common in these policies to say, see policy such and such. And that's a format throughout all of our policies.
And that's why, that's why I don't see why we took that out because I think it tells the kids that there's further information in the student behavior standards book. That's why I said I liked it being in there. I didn't see any reason to, to take that out. And on, I would also, on the, this is ADC, down under the, next to the last one on the first page, facility is any place which is supported by public funds. Do you see that? Then it has a list of the places. It actually enumerates, but I don't see the auditorium in there, so I was wondering if we could, if we could add auditorium in there if you don't think it's lounge area, passageway, restrooms, laboratories, classrooms, study areas, cafeterias, gymnasiums, maintenance, libraries, storage, parking. And so, I just thought if we could stick auditorium because that's a big place where it could easily happen. But it could easily happen anywhere. I just thought it, if it did happen there, it would be nice that it was enumerated.
We can add that in. We can add that in, auditoriums.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The point is, any, anywhere technically, anywhere on, in a school building or school grounds, you know, on a school bus, you know, a school event. Okay? It's...
I also wondered, in one of the other documents that we had back here somewhere, they were talking about, if I remember correctly, they were talking about signs that were put up to, you know...
Yep. It's right underneath, I believe.
If you see discrimination. So, I would like, I'm wondering if we ever put any up about, I think this, especially now with the, with the e-cigarette products, those are, when you take your child to the doctor now, by law, the doctor is required to admonish the parents to beware, to educate their students. So, I'm just, if there's, if there is, if there are additional ways that we can promote this policy in the kids' minds to say, this is not something you want to do, it's not good health, it's, it's against the law, it's whatever that happens to be, I thought that would be another good thing that we could do. But I suppose we don't make our own poster boards. The other ones are probably made by the federal government.
Perhaps. We can make as many signs that we want. I don't necessarily think it needs to necessarily be that granular in a policy per se. Okay? Because out of the policy will flow school protocols, which would include student parent handbooks, it would include signage, it would include curriculum, you know, health classes, guidance counselors, school social workers that work with kids and talk to them about health and safety issues. Okay? And so, I think this is the umbrella, and then you have building protocols for the different levels as appropriate, you know, to...
And I agree with you, Mr. Parker, that it is the umbrella. I'm just saying that I never see these kind of signs in our schools, and I think it would be a reinforcement of, it would be, it would be additional admonition to our students that this is not a good thing.
We can, and we can take that up with the principals in our administrative meetings, principal meetings, moving forward about additional signage where appropriate.
I think also, because I know that Stellows, I know, used to have signage because I was very big on that because when they built Stellows, I said, this is a school facility. You can't have tobacco products there. And I believe they did sign it at that time. And I think maybe we need to ask Mr. Smith because he's with maintenance to make sure we have the signs and they're all out there, and to consult with the principals for the signage.
I don't know if this is something that Jen covers in her job, but I do know that they are telling us now that the e-cigarettes actually burn the kids.
That was someone...
E-cigarettes burn their lungs. And it's a pretty, it's a pretty serious, my sister just died of lung cancer, so I'm very aware right now. I wish somebody had discouraged her many years ago, and she would have, I'm just saying, if there's any little things that we can do to promote these kinds of very important policies, it would make sense to me to do it, especially when it would seem to be, as you well pointed out, it would easily be promoted. So, thank you.
And yes, the oils and the vapes can stick inside your lungs and prevent your cilia from moving, and you can essentially drown yourself in your own secretions.
And...
So, it is not the safer version?
Popcorn lung? And they have.
What?
Isn't that like popcorn lung?
Kind of, yeah.
But, and they've actually done it. I don't think the kids actually get it yet, and I think that's unfortunate. That's why I'm saying, if there's any way that we can promote these things so that the kids are more aware. And all the time I've been on the board, I only remember one speaker coming about drugs. And that was the judge whose son, whose son ended up going to prison. He was moving, to say the least. I don't know how many of you got to see that, but it was, it was, it was timely, and, and the kids, you could hear a pin drop. I couldn't, you, you don't, you don't get that many kids in auditorium and have a pin drop quietly. But they, they were actually, he was so well spoken, and it was such a heart, it had to have an impact. That's all I'm saying. And when there are things that we can do to have an impact on our kids, then I would like, I would like to see us do it as much as is humanly possible, but it...
You're referring to Justice Broderick, I believe?
Yes.
And he is, he, we're planning for him to come back. I've met with him, and Dr. Sartor's met with him a couple of times.
It's wonderful.
And so, it's, it's in the works.
Oh, it was, he was...
Yes, he was.
He's, I have to think that, that his, that his taking that on as an individual, he's probably contributed more to the community in that than he did as a judge, and certainly as a judge, he made major contributions. So, thank you.
One thing I was just saying to Ms. Brown is that, and now, health classes, if we don't teach this, this is a good place to start teaching our high school students regarding the cigarettes and the, you know, the e-vaping and all that. I think there's so much we can do, and then we're kind of limited, too, as a school district. So, anyway, it's a very good topic. It's a hot topic, and as long as we've got this hashed out right now. So, I'm gonna make a motion to accept ADC tobacco products in and out of school facilities and grounds and send it to the full board.
Second.
Ms. Johnson votes yes.
Ms. Darling votes yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay. The next policy we have is AC nondiscrimination. And who's going to speak on this one? Ms. Carey?
Yes, that'll be me again. Okay. So, this...
That's fine.
Okay. So, this policy here pretty much expanded it, again, used the NHSBA policy as the backdrop for it. The biggest difference is it's expanding the current definition of nondiscrimination so that it's compliant now. It also talks about the equal employment, opportunity employment, and the big difference in this is the district anti-discrimination plan. We don't yet have a plan. That will be something that I'm recommending we revisit, and we add that to a later agenda. However, we do need to have this, this policy out and published and current, and so it does reference a plan. And then, along with this policy, there's an updated list on who to reach out to if you have a complaint. So, that would be myself, and then if it's an issue regarding the 504 plan, then who the coordinator is there. So, that's, that one we'll talk about. It's a separate policy. But that's pretty much the biggest difference here in this policy is updating it for the definitions and talking about the district anti-discrimination plan. So, my hope is that we get this approved tonight and then at a later date, as I said, to actually work on coming up with an actual plan because this references a plan, but we need to put one together.
So, this just applies to the employees of the district?
Yeah. Yes. Well, you know what? It's actually, it talks about the employees, but also, I mean, we shouldn't, it does, there's an issue, area in here for students as well, so, but, but yes, this is the updated nondiscrimination policy.
Is there any questions from anybody? Ms. Seem?
I guess I do have a question. We have had, I believe we have problems in our schools with, with the kids calling each other names. Some of them unacceptable, and I wonder what we are actually doing is, I'm not sure. I see, obviously, some offenses are worse than others, so do we have a tiered approach?
Well, we have, we have...
Or do we have...
We have separate policies. We have an anti-bullying policy. We have a Title IX policy that this board just put through not too long ago. That's a 16-page policy and also outlines an entire complaint process. And we also have, so it would depend, but this policy is our nondiscrimination statement along with our plan. So, it's, it's updating what we currently have, but we do have other policies that cover some of those other areas, Ms. Seem.
Oh, is there one that goes to the name-calling?
That's JICK.
It's what? Death?
J, uh, sorry. JICK, the Student Safety and Violence Prevention and Bullying Policy.
Right. We brought that a few months ago.
Yep.
A few months ago.
This wouldn't be bullying. I'm specifically talking, we have had in the district some very discriminated, we've had some bad name-calling and going to race, to be honest with you, and I find, I find that more than...
Sure.
That grieves me. I have to tell you, and I ask myself what's being done in our schools when these kids, if they get away with it, it's like saying it's all right, and it's not all right. It just isn't.
Okay. It is, it is, let me be clear, Ms. Seem, it is not all right.
Thank you.
Okay? And you know what we don't know about, we cannot deal with. Okay? We have policies and protocols in place, and we try to apply them as...
But what I'm saying is, what is the policy, then? If they hear somebody making one of these discriminatory, and it's definitely discrimination, it's...
The protocol is they will go to an adult, all right, who will report it to the administration, building administration, and investigation is done, and all parties, okay, will be interviewed. Okay? And then, based on what the investigation reveals, an appropriate consequence, okay, will be meted out. Okay? Parents are involved, students are involved, the injured, all parents are involved, okay, the aggressor or the victim, okay? And whatever supports we need to do to help ameliorate that situation moving forward. So, it's not just the punishment per se or the consequence, okay? But what education do we need to, what training do we need to put in place? Okay? And so, that's where you have, the tiering comes in, not only with the principal or assistant principal, but the social worker, the guidance counselor, the at-risk counselors, and things like that, and liaison with other outside agencies if necessary.
Are you saying that they have some of, I remember that we had training on this board for discrimination, and so you're telling me they have something like that in our schools for the kids?
We haven't had a formal training per se, but new teachers, when they go over the protocols, rules, and regulations with their building principals, building administration, you know, about the culture, okay, the processes for what to do, that is laid out in student meetings on opening days when new students come, things like that. And so...
And also, the, Ms. Seem, the complaint and reporting procedures are covered in this policy under Section F. And also, some, it references some of the other policies that we talked about in here. If you look under F, one, two, three, below the third paragraph?
Under F?
Under F. This is on page four of six.
I'm sorry. I don't seem to have that.
It's in the back.
Over here? ADC.
While you're looking for that, Ms. Seem, I've got a question to ask.
Go ahead.
What about when we've had parents come in here talking about, and that's been on video, and it's been posted on Facebook, on administrators with kids with disabilities, having them, they had to leave with masks on, and these kids were sitting outside waiting for parents, or they weren't called. Isn't that kind of harassment and discrimination with disabled kids, kids under 504 or IEPs? If...
Not sure I understand the question.
Okay. Okay. So, we're talking about complaint and reporting procedures. So, if a parent comes in and a parent says that my kid has an IEP or 504, and the teachers or administrator was bullying them, and where would they file their complaint? Would they file the complaint? Because I think some things get dropped at times.
They would file the complaint with, they could file it with the principal, they could file it with myself. We've had situations, and we would, and we investigate it. We have a whole process for complaint investigations.
So, if they've gone to the principals, and the principal didn't do anything, would then, when I'm looking at the list, would then it be an officer civil rights issue coming or a human rights issue? Because here's where I guess I'm going with this. If the officer civil rights, we know if the feds get too many complaints, they're going to come in and start investigating, and that's federal dollars because they're violating this piece of paper here. And they have every right, like we've had with ELL, where they came and investigated. And the question is, if there's too many investigations because of discrimination, then our federal funding probably could be on the line. I'm just throwing this out here.
Well...
We take complaints very seriously. So, if something's brought up to our, if something is brought up to us, we investigate it. You know, the last thing we need is to have our, any funding or, you know, we want to, and you, you know, it's important that we address behaviors when they're inappropriate before they mushroom into anything bigger. And, and, you know, and when we're aware of it, we do follow our process. This policy here, again, is updating, just to be clear, what this policy is, is updating our current discrimination policy. It's expanded it. It's included a plan. It has updated the complaint and reporting procedures, and it's, it's simply replacing what we currently have so that we're currently compliant.
Ms. Brown?
So, I have a question just actually about the vocabulary. Can you describe the difference between nondiscrimination and anti-discrimination? Is one kind of preemptive? Is nondiscrimination like, we don't want to discriminate, and then anti is like education for the future, to prevent, preventative?
For me, they're synonymous. I mean, nondiscrimination, keeping it out, anti-discrimination, not having it. Yeah.
Thank you. I just, that's what I was wondering, if they were kind of interchangeable.
But I just wanted to respond to your question if people feel that the building administration, okay, did not deal with something adequately in their view. Nine times out of 10, they would contact someone in the central office, okay? Either HR, the superintendent's office, or the office of the assistant superintendent, or the director of student services, okay, who would then, any one of us, where appropriate for protocol, would then do an investigation to see what has been done, what wasn't done, to separate fact from fiction. All right? So, it doesn't just in, so parents have a remedy. They can go to the central office, to the appropriate office, all right? Who can revisit the issue.
So, if they're, just in general, if there's a complaint against anyone, what's the timeline? And do we say to parents or administration, anybody, that we're investigating it, we need X amount of time? So, we send them an email? We notify them? So, then this way, they don't feel like nothing's being done?
We stay, we stay in touch. We let them know. I primarily handle staffing, staff issues. We'll let them know when I'm going to be getting back to them. And I, it's just my policy in general, just to get back and resolve these matters as quickly as possible. It may be the school administrators that get back to the parents and the student that brought the complaint forward.
Okay.
But yes, timeliness is key, and I couldn't agree more.
Yeah.
And we like to let them know because if I contact a parent, or it comes to me, if I'm that person, and it's not director of student services, all right, I will respond to the parent and copy the principal so everybody's hearing the same information.
Perfect. Thank you.[1799.12] Is there any other questions? Okay, with that said, okay.
I'd speak up.
I know, okay. I'm going to move that we accept policy AC nondiscrimination and send that to the full board. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Johnson votes yes.
Ms. Darling votes yes. Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one is AC-E, annual notice of contract information for human rights officer, Title IX coordinator, 504 coordinator and civil rights agencies.
This, this is new, a new policy, and it goes along with the policy we just reviewed, AC, so this just spells out who these folks are, so myself for the human rights officer, and the Title IX coordinator, and the director of student services for the 504 coordinator, and then also on here, then you have the office for the state and federal office of civil rights, the commission, New Hampshire Commission for Civil Rights, and the New Hampshire Department of Justice, and the Department of Education, so this, this is part of the requirement to also provide this information as well.
Okay, so this is just the piece that, at the end of it, so everybody knows where to go?
Yes, and this will be reviewed on an annual basis.
Okay.
And updated accordingly.
Perfect. Is there any questions from the committee? Okay, Ms. Brown? Do you have a question?
I said no.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion that we approve. I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry, just, I'm getting pushback on policies, so if you want to say, I, can you say the whole policy when you say you move to? Kathy yells at me a lot.
You move to accept AC-E.
I was going to say AC-E. All right, I seconded. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Darling's a yes. Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next policy we have is to rescind policy AC-R, brief statement of nondiscrimination. Is there any discussion on this?
I just, I'm recommending that we remove this policy because it's dated, the nondiscrimination definition has been expanded, and it's redundant, we have what nondiscrimination is in the policy AC that you've just approved, so this is redundant, and I'm just suggesting we delete it.
Yeah, I think it, the new policy kind of spells it out better.
Right.
So yeah, everybody has more of an understanding. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, with that said, I'll make a motion to rescind AC-R and send it to the full board, brief statement of nondiscrimination.
I'll second. All right, and Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Darling's a yes. Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The next proposed policy is KED facilities or services grievance procedure, Section 504.
Okay, I'll speak to that one also. That one came up as a result of updating policy AC, in the reference section, it references policy KED, we did not have one, so this one prohibits discrimination and spells out any qualified handicap person or persons who feels subject to discrimination with respect to Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act has the right to follow a formal grievance. So this particular policy is referenced in AC, and I took this directly from the NHSBA's policy, that's already been vetted through their legal counsel, and I'm recommending that we add this as a new policy.
And this does not apply to board members, it just applies to students?
Well, it's facilities or servants, it refers to facilities and services, and, and it talks about the 504 Rehabilitation Act, so if, if you go through it, it's any qualified handicap person, a person who has a grievance shall discuss it first with the appropriate building principal and attempt to resolve it at that level, and it just talks about what that grievance procedure is.
Okay, and does it apply to employees also?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there any questions on this? Ms. Brown?
So, my question was, so we've got the five days, or you've, you can have a discussion with the principal, and then it says the aggrieved party within five days, if the matter's not resolved, five days, school days, aggravated party shall set forth a grievance in writing, the principal has five days to respond, at the next point, the aggravated party goes no more than five days to receive the principal's decision, and it's essentially like a stack of five days. How does this of a series, and then up to a 10-day hearing with the board, so it ends up being a total of, I don't know, maybe like two months total? Does this limit the amount of time that anyone has an opportunity to bring up discriminatory, discrimination on, of any kind, or just this is specifically related to?
This is specific to facilities or services, under 504 of the Rehab Act, this is specific to this, referring specifically to this section of the rehabilitation.
That was my main concern, so if a child, if a student...
Right.
Doesn't come forth for seven days, and then says something, it doesn't, it doesn't mean they cannot come forward?
No.
Okay.
And if, and then if you read on, it talks about if it's not resolved, and then there's some additional timeframes, again, we adopted this verbatim from the state's policy.
Well, so, it's got a five-day, somebody has to answer in each level within five days, which is good. If the grievance is not resolved, the aggravated party satisfaction, no later than five days of receipt, I'm just going to kind of move along, the coordinator's decision, so the parent and/or employee can then submit it to the Board of Ed to hear it, have a hearing within 30 days in the calendar. Is there any consequences if it's requested to come to the board, and the board will not hear it, or someone makes a decision for the board without the whole board decision?
Well, certainly they can appeal it, and, I'm sorry, but if you go back to, I'm sorry, if you go back to number four, there's a process, hopefully it's getting resolved within that first five-day window, it's, it's being looked at. So hopefully it's, it's not, you know, it's certainly, we wouldn't ignore a complaint, we certainly have an obligation to follow the grievance process if somebody does bring a complaint forward.
So if the board was to deny it coming to them, there's nothing, am I missing something here, what would be their steps?
Well, the steps are outlined here, and then the school board would provide the party bringing the complaint forward with a written decision of the appeal, so it would come to the board if the party wanted to appeal the decision that was found earlier. So it's just, it's, this again is just a step-by-step grievance process, what do I do? I have a complaint, I bring it forward, I'm not happy with the decision, so I take it to the board, the board can do one of two things, it can uphold the, the decision that was already made, or, or not, and again, the board would have a responsibility then to provide a written decision within 10 days. So I guess I'm, I'm missing your, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, I'm not understanding the question.
I think I do understand your question, but I think the answer is simply, is simply this, I think number seven, okay, the decision of the school board is final pending any further legal recourse as may be described in current local, district, state, or federal statutes pertaining to Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. If you would make a decision based on what's already been done in this process, you're deciding not to hear something is a decision, because you're basing that on a particular reason, okay, looking at what's been presented, is there nothing further for you to hear or discuss? I mean, and so, I mean, we're speculating right now, okay, but in effect, that is, in one way, a decision that's been made, okay, because you wouldn't just say, no, I'm not going to hear it, ostensibly there would be a rationale or a reason, albeit succinct or brief, okay, we're not hearing this because of X, Y, and Z, this has been dealt with, this has been heard, this, we don't feel any...
There's really not an option in here not to hear it.
Whoa.
Number, yeah, you, number five, you, that's part of the grievance process, if there, if the aggrieved party is not happy with the decision, then their next step is to come to the Board of Education, then the Board of Education would make the final decision. So you would hear it, and then make a decision from there, you wouldn't make a decision prematurely to not hear it, you would want to hear the facts, you would want to hear what the situation is.
I don't know how much further I'm going to take this.
If there are specific things that you have questions about, you could probably give them a call and ask them for specific answers.
Sure, I guess the issue is, we don't currently have this policy, policy AC references this, and it's something that we need to have, that's the, that's the bottom line of this particular policy, how we administer it, how it comes up, we can certainly, you know, discuss that in more detail, but this is really what the grievance procedure is for Section 504 of the Rehab Act.
Okay, so this is brand-new?
Yes.
Okay, so anything prior to this, if there was no steps that were followed, parents who feel that they didn't have their day, let's say in court, they can come back and start this all over again to go through the process. Now, do step one, two, three, four, five, or finish it off and then say, well, in your policy, we are entitled to come to the board for a hearing, and we want you to hear the case. You didn't have a policy before, you have the policy now.
Again, it's for facilities and services, I mean, we do have processes in place right now where if parents are not happy with their 504 plan, they certainly, there's a whole process now, this is just, so I don't know that that would even be, be an issue.
Okay. I'm just playing devil's advocate here, you know, I'm pretty good at that. Is there any other, Ms. Zim?
Is handicap, is a handicapped person considered to be special education?
Depends on what the handicap is. You know, quite frankly, I had not thought about that question, but...
I think probably the non-normative behaviors we would be seeing, non-normative behaviors or actions that we would be seeing in students would parcel them out to either a 504 or an IEP, so it doesn't matter what the actual physical or emotional or developmental disability is, depending on what it is, it would fit within the proper modification, so either the 504 or the IEP. So I think handicapped, even though I think there's probably a better word, is probably the all-encompassing, because you could realistically have a child with both an IEP and a 504.
Thank you. You can also have a child that's handicapped or disabled and not have either one of them.
Yep.
And so how do you, so that wouldn't qualify then underneath this, because there would be no 504 plan, but under ADA, there would have to still be reasonable accommodations.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'm going to move to accept KED facilities or services grievance procedure, Section 504, I recommend it to send it to the full board.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Darling's a yes. Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just looking at the time, because I know that we have to end at 7 o'clock tonight, so I'm trying to see what's an easy next policy, and I think the next one would be Polic ILD, noneducational, nonacademic questionnaire surveys and research, maybe we can get through part of that, I don't know, because I know the other ones behind it is kind of, I have a lot of questions on.
Well, which one, do you have any policies that don't have a lot of questions in front of you?
Let me see, about K E...
And if we want to, I mean, BCA is on, and I'm here to speak to it, if anybody had any questions about it?
I have a lot written up on that.
Mm-hmm, so not 10 minutes worth?
Not 10 minutes worth.
Okay.
Because I've got something else to follow that right behind, okay, so we did the KED.
I mean, if we don't think we can fit anything else in 10 minutes, we can just end now.
I'm looking for K E, because that does, is public complaints. Okay. Taking it out of order, K E, doesn't look like it's a very, it's public complaints?
It does, we're finishing up policy.
Ms. Zim, on K E, do you think that's going to be pretty long, that we need to?
Oh, thanks.
Okay, so why don't we jump over to K E? Public complaints.
This is, this is simply a policy where it outlines a process for people that have complaints against any, whether it's the board, the superintendent, principal, or teacher, it's just stated, you know, that it gets kicked, if somebody comes to you with a complaint as a board member, kick it back down to where it belongs, if it's a building issue, okay, get it to the principal, okay, and they will deal with it, you know, the appropriate parties, if it's a central office issue that we need to be involved, the superintendent, or the assistant superintendents, or HR, or director of student services, okay, they will work with the people that they need to work to, all right, so don't leapfrog and go straight to the board, there is a process, and so what this is outlining, if it does, if an issue does come to the board, that it follows administrative process and let folks know, before you get to us, we're not the first place you start.
Right.
You're the last place, you know, start where the issue is, if it's in a building, okay, that's where it starts, and follows that process, and hopefully it'll be resolved there, and this sort of outlines that, just making it clear, so, Kate, if you want, if you have a complaint and you want, you know, an hearing, there's a process to go, to go through it.
Right.
Simply put.
My understanding, Mr. Parker, is, and I've always been told this, ever since I've been on the board, you start with the teacher, hopefully you can work it out at the lowest level, and frequently they do, and then from there, they go to the assistant principal or the principal, whichever happens to be available, and from there, they go to the assistant superintendent or the superintendent, whichever, depending on, you know, how big everybody...
Or the director of student services.
And then to the board.
Yes.
Student services, where would that fit in?
Well, for instance, director of student services is responsible for guidance counselors, for instance, so student supports, and so it's just...
That would probably be referred from the assistant superintendent toward this.
Or from the principal, depends on what the issue is.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
All right.
Depends on what the issue is.
Sounds good to me, I make a motion.
Okay, but each level would recommend to the next one, if it's not resolved.
Yes, no, no, I make a motion that we approve policy KEB, public complaints about school personnel, employees, students, or administration.
K E?
So we were doing K E. And then KEB is similar, but a little bit more expansive.
I was going to say.
And this is one of those policies that we have to remember as a board, that when some, when people come to us with complaints, it could realistically end up in a hearing, so the more involved we become with parent issues, the less likely we are to be able to have a proper hearing for them, so when parents start, you know, expressing their concerns or their complaints to us, it's best to like, reach out to the superintendent as fast as we can, so that our ears stay as unencumbered of, of information, because if, if it's found that we, you know, are making decisions, when people are presenting information to us that are biased, it can have some significant repercussions, so that's why it's best to take this information and put it off, because we're their final, their final go-to.
It was, it was my experience over the years, that usually when you tried to keep it at the lowest level, it was the easiest to resolve there, because that's where they really know what's going on about it, and, and usually it, it was that they were jumping, rather than going to the closest and the easiest, they were jumping, so, so it's a good reminder for us all. Thank you.
I think the best reminder is to say to them, you know, if this ever has to come to the board, we have to be judge and jury, and, you know, one or two of us have to recuse ourselves and abstain from listening, because you've told us too much, it can hurt you either way in a decision, so most of the time, if anybody wants to talk to me, I say to them, this is where you start, don't talk... Don't talk to me, I don't want to hear it. I don't want to be rude, but I just can't hear it. Ms. Brown?
So I absolutely agree with everything in this policy. It makes sense, it makes things go better. I was actually wondering if we could add something to the policy that if a board member is approached first with a complaint and they are directed to the superintendent, that the superintendent or board president shall confirm with individual board member that the issue has been addressed. That's my, well, that's been one of my concerns, is not so much the, how it is addressed, but that it is addressed in a timely fashion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Where would you like to add that?
I don't know if it would go between, it would be like 2A, under, in the event that a complaint is made to an individual board member. I don't know if it would be like, if member of the public will not personally present the complaint to the superintendent or principal, the board member shall then ask the complaint be written and signed, the board member will then refer the complaint to the superintendent for investigation. And I think that's good. Could we add in there something, within five days, the superintendent or designee shall confirm with the board member that the issue has been addressed? And they don't even have to necessarily say how it's been addressed, but just that it has been addressed.
So I think that that's answered in number three, where it says that a majority vote is the only kind of, is, the board will hear, wait a second. What is it? So, I mean, everybody can respond to our emails and say, thank you, I've received this, but we can't direct the superintendent to actually follow up on anything without a majority vote?
And I think what I'm saying is, I don't necessarily think it's necessary for the individual board members to know how it's been acted on as, in case there's an grievance and it comes back to the board. I think it is important to know that it was addressed, not ignored or gone to the wrong email box or not back to the appropriate principal, just essentially a confirmation, thank you, this is being, this has been addressed. And just kind of, again, and not micromanaging and telling them how to address it, but that it has been addressed, I think is really important for a communication standpoint.
I feel like that should be like just courteous business practices.
That's just professional standards, I think.
Someone's not doing it, then...
Thank you for the email, I'll address this.
But over the years, to Mrs.'s, her point, there have been times when I remember people, there have been times when I remember individuals who were not given the courtesy. I don't think it was intentional, but sometimes you get busy going in seven different directions, and, and because you know it was resolved, you think everybody knows it, and that's not always necessarily the case. I remember specifically, there was a lady that came via email, and I think she attended our meeting as well, saying that, you know, that the courtesy of knowing would have been appreciated. So that's, I think that's, that's all, that's all I think I hear you saying, that you'd just like it to be in the policy, that it will be acknowledged, that they will let the person know that it's being dealt with.
And that's basically what I said before, that everybody should, you know, there should be an understanding that a complaint was made and that we're dealing with it and we will follow up. We don't have to, I like timelines on follow-up. So, Mr. Parker, did you write that down? What?
I did.
Can you just read it back? Thank you.
Well, I just said I didn't write it fully, but within five days, the superintendent or designee will just update the board.
Okay.
That matter was addressed.
Is everybody happy with that sentence, Ms. Carrie?
I just, I don't know, a five-day, you know, depending on what the situation is, it may warrant additional time. I don't know that we want to isolate the time or just say that, you know, the, but just say that, you know, update the board that the matter's been resolved or the matter's being addressed. I don't know to isolate it and pigeonhole it into a timeframe.
I actually agree with that because it depends on the situation, just saying that it was done, because some things, she's right, won't be done in five days necessarily.
In a timely fashion?
Sure.
That's, well, you could do in timely fashion, time is of the essence, you know?
Well, I think basically, you know, upon resolution of the case, you've been, all right, it could be five days, it could be 10 days, it could be one day, it could be an hour, all right? And I don't know if that's so important that we have to be explicit in the policy, but just to say that it's been resolved. So whatever that means, you know, that's between the superintendent or the principal or whoever, it was dealt with, it was dealt with.
What happens if it's not resolved? Because sometimes complaints come to the superintendent and they're not resolved, and then they escalate up to us. So it would seem to me that if we're saying to the superintendent, you must get back to us, you know, when it's resolved, sometimes they're not. It seems to me that we might want to just have an update, you know?
Just to say it's being addressed.
Say within 10 business days, you know, not an update. The superintendent will, I don't know, inform the board that the matter, that the matter has been received and, you know, within 10 business days? I don't know.
I just, I don't, I just think to, I think that, you know, because you just, you've, you have a, you've, you're in receipt of a matter, and so what you need to know is that the matter is being addressed, and that's, but to pigeonhole it into a timeframe, I just don't think that's realistic. I think, and it may very well be a situation where you won't end up knowing what the details are. But the important thing is to know that it's being addressed. Ms. Darling?
I just want to say, Ms. Brown, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard you saying was that you wanted, within the timeline, to just get confirmation from the superintendent that like, yes, it has been received and yes, it is being looked into, not necessarily the results or details, right?
That's what I was looking for, and I'm okay with not taking, the timeline is variable to me, doesn't, that's not very important. I think it's more, I received, received this, and yes, we're working on it. And I, that's, so you know at least somebody is taking a look at the issue at hand. So yes, I think you're exactly right, Ms. Darling.
So confirmation of receipt, is that...
Not, yeah, not necessarily that it's been resolved, because I understand it could be six months, depending on what the issue is. But I think, yeah, if to know that it's in process, I guess.
We can, we can let you know, the superintendent can let you know that something's in process or, you know, but I wouldn't want to get too granular and pigeon, be that precise or specific because we don't have that kind of control necessarily.
Agreed.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, I'm going to move that policy K E, public complaints, goes to the full board. As amended, thank you.
I'll second. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Darling is a yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
So we have to end this meeting and then go into an emergency special meeting.
So I think we've, so next policy meeting, we're going to need to start with KEB. This is where we're ending right now.
K E B, B C A.
K E B and K E B dash R. That's where we have to start with. And then we're going to have B C A, B C A R. And I think we got it...
I L D.
Yeah, I L D and I L D dash R.
There's, there's K E B, which is related to K E.
Is that for being rescinded?
Uh, K E B R is a recent. The other one is public complaints about school personnel.
Yeah, that's the more detailed policy, K E B. We just talked about K E, which you've made a recommendation for...
K E to go to the full board.
With the acknowledgement of receipt. K E B, we haven't talked about yet.
Right, no, but I, we were going to do a hard stop at 7:00, and that whatever we didn't finish was going to go into the next.
I just wanted to add that on the list.
Okay.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. You were just listing off. I was like, what are, is this something we can do quickly? Okay, sorry.
I don't, can we? So K E B? Yeah, I, that's what I think I'm going to do. We'll just table the rest of the agenda for next month. Okay. So is there anything else that we need to discuss quickly? No?
Uh-uh.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Darling says yes.
And we are adjourned at 7:08.
Can somebody turn the recording off?